Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to our virtual town hall for Rails for our strategic plan. This is our second round of town halls. And our, our topics are a little bit different this time. So if you were part of our first round town halls or some of the other engagements that we've been doing, with a little bit of a different focus today. Today, we're really going to be looking at our, our objectives. So some more of the detailed parts of the plan. We're going to go over the terminology and the vocabulary as part of this session. So don't worry if you haven't been able to participate until today, we're going to get you caught up. I want to start just by offering a few words of welcome. My name is Stephanie Chase, and I'm the founding principal of the Constructive Disruption Consultancy. And that focuses on staff-led, community-focused, strategic planning, change management, and strengths-based leadership. So I'm really have the privilege of working with Rails leadership, Rails staff, and then you as member libraries and member leaders to facilitate the development of a new strategic plan. And today's session is just one of the ways that we've really worked to make sure that members can be involved and member voices can be included. So just a little bit about me, because I think we often want to know who this person is leading our meetings. I've been working in libraries for almost 25 years, including a decade as a library director in small rural libraries in Vermont and New Hampshire, and a decade in executive library leadership out here in the Pacific Northwest, including until just before the pandemic, as the director of libraries for the city of Hillsborough, which is a city of about 100,000 just west of Portland, Oregon. I also spent time as a school librarian. In addition to my consulting work, just to show you how important resource sharing is to me, I'm also the executive director of the Libraries of Eastern Oregon, which is a 15-county, 50-member cooperative system that covers about 50,000 square miles. So about half of the state of, of Oregon. Also, on my second term on the PLA Board of Directors, the Public Library Association Board of Directors, and I serve on ALA Council with Monica. So again, as we get started, I want to acknowledge and thank the members of our Strategic Planning Steering Committee. The committee is made up of members, board members, and Rails staff. I'll stop showing my screen in just a moment, because I saw we have several members here today who can give a wave and say hello. And then before I bring my slide deck back up, I'll turn it over to Monica just to offer a few words of welcome. So again, thank you to our Strategic Planning Steering Committee members who are here and to all of you who are taking time from your afternoon to be here with Rails. So today, this is what we're going to be going over. Again, we started with our introductions and some words of welcome. We're going to do a brief overview of the planning process and the structure that we're using. For those of you who are at the September member update or who are part of the first round town halls, some of this will be reviewed for you. So we'll try to move quickly through it, but we also want to make sure that those of you for whom this is the first time you're able to engage, you really have an opportunity to hear what your colleagues have heard, and that we're all really coming from a place of shared understanding and shared vocabulary. We're going to review our emerging strategic goals and the objectives. We're going to use a lot of breakout sessions and some individual reflection type in those sessions to really engage with what your colleagues have really developed. And we're going to leave time at the end for questions. For those of you who have been part of sessions with me before, I love to use this tool Poll Everywhere, which really lets us get kind of in-the-moment feedback. And there are two ways that you can participate. So one, if you're like many of us who have your phone always at your hip, you could use your texting app. In that case, you'd open whatever app you use, and in the to field, where you would typically put a person's name or a phone number, you're going to type in 22333. And then the, the text message body, where you would typically type your message out, you're going to type constructive785, and that's all one word, so no space. When you do that, you should get a text back that says you're part of the poll, and that then, from there on, each text message you send will be a poll answer. If you prefer, you could use the web. And so for that, typically when Zoom goes into screen sharing mode, it goes full screen. So you might need to press escape just to shrink Zoom a little bit. That will let you navigate back to your browser, where you can type in pollev.com/constructive785. It will take you through the steps. But when you do do the web, it asks you to type in your name, so I can't see it. So you can go ahead and press skip. And from there, when you look at on the web, what question we're on will be present for you right on the screen and give you a spot to enter your answer. And of course, you can use the web version on any browser, including on your phone. So these instructions at the top of every screen that we have a poll up in case you need them again. We have a couple of questions just to get a sense of who's, who's participating. And I'm actually compiling the answers across these town halls today. So we're going to see a little bit of who was here yesterday and how it changes with who's here today. So the first question is just for you to share what kind of library you work in. And in this case, if you're texting, you could just text the letter that corresponds to you. And if you're on the web, you should be able to choose. And so as, as we anticipated, and we often have strong public library representation. So thank you to our public library colleagues who are here. But we have a good group of academic folks. At the end, we'll see, we have two more of these, including one today. So I encourage everybody here to reach out to your colleagues that are in school and academic and special libraries, encourage them to participate. And then the next question that we have, just to get a sense, is just what you've been able to participate in before. So in this, you can answer more than once. So if you were at, for example, both the member update meeting and the first round town hall, then you could put both of those answers in. So it looks like today, a lot of our group was able to be part of one of those previous two sessions. But we will again have an overview for those of you who is your first. Great, thank you. And then, yes, Carolyn, let me put that in. The, the poll everywhere for you, just so that you have it. And we're a couple more, and so it'll be handy for you right there. Okay. Now, so again, as we just look over the planning process and what we've done in the past, I just want to emphasize, it's really, we started by really building on the success of the current strategic plan. So we're really taking what's been successful and bringing it forward. So it doesn't mean we're keeping the exact same goals or we're not doing anything new. We're just really exploring Rails' strengths and the opportunities that really have presented themselves over the past few years. And the process, we're really asking members and Rails staff to lead the shaping of the objectives and the measurements of success. That's what we're really going to spend time doing today. And then when I develop processes, it's really important to me to really think about capturing input in a wide variety of ways and with a wide variety of audiences. So I also really want to make sure that you, as someone who's given your time to this process, can really see how contributions really help shape the plan. So we're going to touch on that today. That's really part of the core values of the International Association of Public Participation. So I really include that as part of my, what I'm building my planning processes. They look like this, you can go to the website and look them up, but let me translate them for you for what it really means for our process. So it really means that when we are looking at this process, member and staff participation are prioritized. So we're really making sure that this is a process that's really driven both by Rails staff, but also strongly by member libraries. We really want to make sure that contributions to the process will help shape the final product. And I know that seems like a strange thing to bring up, but I think many of us have been parts of processes where maybe it's hard to been, hard to see, we know what we offered up here in the plan. So we're making that commitment to you. The Rails is going to offer multiple modes of participation and help make sure that members can participate. And that we'll share how input shaped the final product. And again, we're going to touch on some of how we can see that today already. Our work is really to develop a plan where goals are supported by measurable objectives. And because this is really a tool that Rails is going to use for their work, we really want to make sure that Rails staff can see their work in the plan and see their opportunities to contribute to the plan. So that resonates with Rails staff. And that also, that work that we're doing really supports member libraries, so we can see that line through. We want to be really thoughtful that we've just been and we still are in this massive moment of transformation and change. So we want to make sure we're really incorporating the lessons that we've learned over the past 18, 19 months. And we want to focus first and foremost on member library need. So again, really putting members at the front of what we're doing. One of the ways that we're really making sure that we're doing that again is with our Strategic Planning Committee, which is made up of all of those groups, again, board members, staff, member library representatives from a wide range of library sizes and types, to really make sure that those voices are heard. It was one of the first things that we did as we really started to make sure again that we have this member-focused plan. We've also held multiple engagement sessions with staff, with the board, with members like you in general, and with the steering committee. We've had that previous round of five town halls where we really focused on covering potential goals. So you'll see again the results of that work in our session today. We've held 10 hours of small group focus groups and stakeholder interviews. And we also worked with the steering committee to do a review of the Rails mission statement, which will be bringing, I believe, to the board next, but certainly all of us will see as part of the plan. So again, because your voices are really important, we're going to start right away getting into some breakout groups. If you opened up that breakout guide, you'll see there instructions for each of the breakout groups. This first one is simple. Just want you to introduce yourselves to the people who are in your group. I'm sharing a little bit about your work, something about you that doesn't have to do with work. And then just talk a little bit about the process. So if you've participated with something that you've enjoyed, and if you're just beginning to be able to engage, what's something that you're really hoping for? So I'll pause our recording. Okay, so one of the things that I love when we come back from a, a group session is just to get a sense of some of, of what you discussed. So here, challenge you in a word to share something you've liked about the process or you're looking forward to. And if you need more than one word, if you need a couple, my suggestion is to make sure that you use the hyphen to keep them connected. If you have a space, it will break your answer apart. So some of the things that we've liked, we really liked the small group discussions. I like the ideas of the input. We like the inclusivity. We like the connection, that's what's really standing out for us. We like the representation that we can connect. There have been multiple options. That way of confluence, we're learning and sharing, getting to meet other members. That we could use this texting, I'm glad that someone enjoys that. The relationships, the ideas. So I'm really glad to see that these are resonating for people. The exploration. So it's wonderful, I think, sometimes to take a moment and just think about how, what we're really loving about a process that part of. And again, our ability to connect and to network and meet with new people and really share our thoughts and share our input. Great. So next, I want to touch just briefly on the elements of a strategic plan. And again, there's a lot of different terms of language that are used as part of strategic planning. And I recognize that this may be different even from language that you use in your own organization. And that's why I think it's really important just to come together to make sure as we work through what we're doing today, we just have a really good sense of what we are really working on. So the first, when we look at a strategic plan, the part that I say should fit out a page, right? Starts with your strategic goals. So that's really the broadest, the biggest level. And that's what Rails is really going to focus on to support their mission. So our strategic goals and our strategic plan as a whole is not intended to really reflect and represent everything that we do as an organization. It's really about what we're focusing on in the next set period of time, the next two or three or four years. What we're really choosing to invest in, what we're really choosing to focus on. And so this high level, those goals, really talk about where Rails is going to focus their resources. So again, so the only thing they're doing, that's where they're really choosing to invest. Under each goal, there are a number of objectives. And that is, those are a little bit more specific, right? We're getting a little bit more detailed. That really talks about the work that we're going to do to achieve the goals. So how we're really working to make those goals happen. And I think it's really important that each objective really be paired with a measurement of success. And that really tells us that we're working in the right direction. And so I'll give an example of this. So if we are working at public libraries, most public library plants tend to have something at the goal level that's really about supporting student success. So that could be about the relationship we have with our school district, could be about work we're doing with students. We tend to see a goal that, so saying, we're going to invest in our students. But of course, that could be everybody from, you know, preschool, getting ready for school, up through community college. It's a huge range or through four-year. So that's a huge range of ages that we could really be engaging with. So we get a little bit more specific when we think about the objectives. And again, most public libraries will typically have something in the sub, it's really about early literacy. It's about really supporting our youngest learners. One of the ways that we tend to do that is through our storytimes. But of course, just like there are as many different kinds of ages of students, there are a lot of different ways, a lot of different things we could be hoping to achieve through storytime. And our measurements of success would really help us determine if we're going in the right direction. So because we could be looking at storytimes that are really very strongly focused on academics, so that are really about ensuring there's number and pattern and letter recognition, color recognition as part of what we're doing, really getting kids ready for that. But we also could have storytimes that are really focused on the more social aspects of being ready for school, cooperating together, collaborative and cooperative play. And those storytimes might be very different, might be focused very differently than storytimes that are really focused again on that kindergarten readiness skill. So that's why it's really important to really determine the direction that we're going in, how we're going to measure our success. You know, that's we're going to spend the most of our time today. And then where we often, I think, sometimes feel most comfortable are in those annual actions. That's where we see specific projects or initiatives or services. And that's really something, Rails has a very strong structure already in place, this kind of annual planning and annual reporting. But that's where we are really going to see those specifics. And we're really looking at them on, say, an annual basis. So they're also flexible and they're responsive to what we're currently doing. So thinking about that, thinking about that goal level, those areas of focus, this is where we're really looking. Again, these really came out of kind of looking through and analysis of years, kind of member comment and request, strengths and opportunities. And that what really came out of the first round of town halls. So we know we want a goal that's really highlighting Rails, the leadership role in supporting member libraries. We know that we want a goal that's really, really focused on the future. So that when we are thinking about a professional development and the support for member libraries, it's really focused on the future, what we need to be successful going forward. We know that resource sharing is such a essential part of what Rails does in many different ways. So ensuring that that resource sharing is sustainable and equitable across member library types. And then one that came out of our member engagement was really in this language about modeling best practices in equity, diversity, and inclusion. So the real expectation that Rails will help each of us as member libraries with this work, be better prepared to do this work in our own organizations. So again, member feedback really shapes that addition of an equity-focused goal, very specific ideas of the direction the goal should take. The member input and feedback really shapes the concepts of the potential objectives under each goal. And you'll see those in just a moment. The focus on expanding or building upon the successes of current resource sharing programs and services, that's a very clear, very direct request from members. The advocacy and cross-type and digital environment focus of the future-ready goal, which you'll see in just a moment. And the language of the organizational excellence goal itself came right from our steering committee. So we will look at that, this is what some of the goal statements might look like. Again, these are just draft. What we'll be doing after this round of engagement is going back to our Strategic Planning Steering Committee to really work on honing the language. So think of these kind of language concepts now. If you have some ideas for particular words, we'd love to hear them. But this is really about the concept that we're saying the right thing. So the first goal really being that Rails leads alongside member libraries, develop and strengthen the Illinois library community. And again, focusing on the, the community as a whole, that the big presence that Rails has. Rails supports member libraries and preparing for their future. So again, really making sure we're incorporating that future focus. Rails ensures leadership and providing sustainable, equitable resource sharing across member library types. We've had some feedback on kind of the directness and the strength we want to see in this language already. So this is one where I think you'll see a little bit of language change. But again, those words, sustainable and equitable, being really important. And Rails seeks to model, so again, seeking the much is modeling best practices in equity, diversity, and inclusion for member libraries. So what I'd like to do is get you back in your breakout groups. So you'll be with the same group that you were just with before. I'll check over, I think we had some people come and go. So I'll look over the groups just to see if we're missing, or we have any gaps. And what I'd like to do is to have you be able to dig in a little bit to the, the, the individual information. So I'm just going to shrink this down. And let me open this screen for you. So when you have your breakout guide in hand, we're here in breakout two. You're going to have about 20 minutes to do this. And so what I'd like for you to do is just to review the potential goal language and the ideas for the objectives. And they're each linked below. So when you click on each of these four, you should be able to see them. And I'll show you what that looks like in a minute. So what I'd love for you to do is to just touch, look over each of the four. But then as a group, really pick one to dig into with your time together. So say, if you look at this one for equity, each of them has a little bit of a description at the top. That's kind of a little bit of a background about where this is coming from. You'll see the potential language for the goal. You'll see some potential objectives here again. In each of these, the objective language really came from, from member libraries. You'll see some potential action items. So as you're really thinking about like, what should we be doing in this area? Some ideas, again, that really came from members. And then some of them, let me see if I have one. Some of them have some notes, which you'll see here, just are, are direct from members, just so that you can see some of what your colleagues were really thinking about. So I'm going to give everybody about 20 minutes back in your groups to look through these, these different, four different areas. Pick one, though, to really dig into. And you'll see, everybody should have commenting privileges if I bring it back up. So you should be able to just go right ahead and make suggestions and add some comments. So I hear people leaving, I have a couple of messages that people need to go. So let me pause my, the recording. So now that you're back from your second breakout group, let's just see a little bit about what you might have touched base on. So if there's something that, that's part of your discussion that just really resonated for you, something that you would really like to make sure the others here hear, then I invite you to type it in here. You can type this just as a statement or a sentence, you don't have to worry about using the hyphens. Yes, and Scott tried to challenge all of you, all that going on at Google Docs at the same time. So just probably a discussion or question that we have about what workforce development really looks like. If we're going to be ready for the future, the resource sharing is really essential. Support and advocacy for small libraries and collaboration between everyone. That small libraries can have delivery issues. So here, let me try to grab this before it goes away. The, so a particular goal needs to be directed to each type of Rails and within library types, so that it approaches at one size fits all. So some standards perhaps for libraries in each type that could reach for. So in some of the ways where we're thinking about how to best serve everybody, that to think about if there are standards or levels that might work for different groups. All four goals are important. Advocacy in all caps in resource sharing. We still have some of that in-house delivery. Support for libraries to become adequately funded. The role of funding is struggling, the strong Illinois library ecosystem. Advocacy for libraries is public spaces at the state or federal level. So the role that libraries really play in community life. And that serving the unserved and underserved is so important, so really broadening that reach. So again, thank you so much for sharing this with us. And it sounds like you had some great conversations while we were in that second breakout. So as we get ready for the last piece today, so dug in a little bit, looked at those goals a little more. Now, what I'd really like to talk to you is just really thinking about your expectations for the work that's happening in them and how we'd measure that success. So today, we're going to use four different terms to really talk of four different ways of measuring. So thinking about input measurements, output measurements, outcome measurements, and impact. Let's talk a little bit about what each of those looks like. So an input measure is really just, they're the resources that are used to produce or develop a service. So inputs could include funding, staffing, equipment, supplies. For example, if we were thinking about that storytime example that we used, we're kind of thinking about how the different parts of the strategic plan can really give us direction and focus. This might be, if we said, you know, we really think it's important to see an investment of resources in our storytimes. So we're going to add an early literacy specialist, or we're going to direct a certain amount of our funding towards this work. That'd be an example of an input measure. Output measures, we're probably all very familiar with. This is just really what's produced as a result of using that investment, right? In order to kind of, to show what we did. So we invested this, this is what we got out. And outputs are really typically tangible, and they're typically quantitative. And they tend to show activity rather than value or impact. And again, this is where we're most familiar with library, you know, measurements of success. Because things like storytime attendance, number of storytimes that we've held, the number of days a week we might be having storytime, you know, our visits, our circulation, those are all examples of output measures. And so in some cases, output measures can be really valuable because they really demonstrate the activity, and that's what's important. And then as we're finding, sometimes in, it can be really hard for output measures alone to show the, the variety of what's really happening. For anybody who is familiar with ACRL and PLA, who's really put out and, and worked on that project outcome plan, and then outcome measurements might be familiar to you. And so an outcome measure is really looking at the change from the perspective of the individuals who have participated. So where the input and the output measures are really based on, say, in this case, Rails. What did Rails invest? What did Rails count? An outcome measure is really focused then on the experience of the individual who really took part in something, or the member library who really took part in something. And we talk about this really about how you're getting from point A to point B. How are we getting from point A to point B? What do we hope that changes? And so we look at measuring outcomes. You know, we could be thinking about newer, deeper skills, a change of behavior or attitude, a change in status. So we're thinking about that storytime example. We might say at the beginning of a series, a set of storytimes, we might just have a simple survey for parents that ask how comfortable they are, you know, with some of the skills that we're going to be sharing as part of storytime. And then after the set, where we've really tried to help parents gain these skills, feel comfortable, then we do the same survey at the end to see what kind of change we have really, we've really brought forward. Then the last one we're looking at is an impact measure. And so those really demonstrate a long-term overall effect of a program or a service. And, and these are really, it's really about massive, long-term change. So impact measures are something that we have to think about. We're investing now for results that we may not be able to see potentially for years. And so if we look at storytime again as an example, you know, our hope is by investing in our youngest patrons there, helping them get ready for school, that they'll be more successful in school. But it will be years, they'll have, it'll need to take years of schooling before we might really be able to, to judge that impact. Impact measures, as a note, typically, that's where those stories are really important. So when we think back to what people share about how libraries have changed their lives, that moment that sometimes we might not reprimand, you know, we might not remember where, you know, we gave a student the right book at the right time, and they came back to tell us how much that changed their life, the ability to have a resource at the, at the moment of time that somebody needed it. That's really a demonstration of the impact that we're having. But again, those can be harder to measure, and they can take a long time to really come to fruition. So we're going to get back into our breakout groups, and we're going to talk about these, these four measurements. Really think about our expectations for the work that Rails may be doing as part of their next strategic plan and how we'd like to see them evaluated, what our expectations are for the work that's happening. So if you need, you can review the Measurements of Success document, which is linked to from your breakout guide. So if you are like, oh, I want to go back to those four slides where you just described what they were, that's there for you on that Measurement of Success document. I'd like you to consider at least one goal and the member developed potential objectives. And I would suggest And I would suggest really looking at that goal that you just spent time commenting on and discussing in breakout two. And what I'd love for you to do is really ask yourselves as a group, if Rails is doing the work in this goal right, how would they know? How would Rails know? And what do we as member libraries really expect? And I'll show you in a moment where you can add those comments in the form. Let me stop sharing this piece here. And if we go to the breakout guide, there are two pages of instructions, but I encourage you to not be overwhelmed. Because I'm just trying to give you the information that you need. So again, here's that question. If Rails is doing the work in this, when I see here, I said initiative instead of goal. So let's put goal right. How would they know? How, what do we expect as member libraries? And the thing I'll really caution you is that sometimes we need to take a step back. And you can see that I give that advice right here. Because sometimes our activities, what we're coming up with actually activities, things that we'd like to see Rails do, for example, and not the result. So what you could do again is just take that step back and ask, by doing this thing, say by offering story times, what do we hope will be the result? So what do we hope will happen by doing this thing? And we are at that point, what we really want to focus on today is that happen, right? That result, what do we hope will be the result of the things that we do? It can be hard, I think, sometimes if you think, oh, how am I even going to get started? So if you're someone or your group likes to tell stories, then I have this advice for you here. Imagine it's 2025. So you know, it's, it's several years down the road. What's happening right now? If you sat and you imagined what Rails is, is doing in an area right now, what are you seeing? What are you hearing? What are you feeling? What are Rails staff doing? What are your colleagues doing? What's available to you? So you could start really by telling yourself, your, your group can start by, by sharing a story. And then ask yourself what Rails needs to do to make your story come to life. So for example, to make that story come to life, would you need more resources? Would you need to move resources? That's an input measure. Would you be able to quickly come up with some numbers that show how it's being used? That would be an output measure. Would Rails need to work with other member libraries or organizations to make happen? And what would that partnership look like? That's an example that could be an outcome measure. Would Rails really need to change hearts and minds, right? What change? Are you thinking about a change that really needs to happen? That's an example of an outcome measure. Would you want to see Rails really dedicate a long time to making it happen? And recognizing that they may not be able to report out to you in a, in a way using hard numbers for some time. What would you really hope would come to pass after that, that investment? That's an impact measure. And I'd like for you to each pick someone in your group who really makes sure that you, they put your conversation into the, the form that I'll show you in just a minute. And just to really help with your conversation, I put those questions that are in the form right there for you. The same piece, if you tell the story, kind of what, what comes out of the story? What does Rails need to do to really make your story come to life? And if as part of that, you came up with a measurement of success to share it. And so when you see that, that form, it will look just like this. Again, we can choose the goal you're focusing on. And just an opportunity to fill out the answers that really fit for you. So we're going to take about a half an hour to do this section, this, this last breakout. Let me bring this back up. And so that we can work together to really dig in, again, to really help express what our expectations are for the work that's happening here. So just like last time, I'll keep track of time for you and I'll let you know what about 10 minutes, about 20 minutes has gone by. And we have about five minutes left. And I'll stop, I'll pause the recording and then I'll stop sharing my screen and see if we have any questions. So again, thank you so much for all of the thinking and the talking and the discussing that you've been doing this afternoon. Just before we get ready to go, I just want to get a sense of that last discussion. So for each of our goals, I'm going to ask you to share your thoughts about which measure would be most meaningful. And for each one, you can answer three times. So you can, if, if you have multiple, if you think, oh, I think it should be an input and an outcome measure, then you can choose A and C. If you really think the one that really resonates for me is an outcome, you can do C three times. And I'm going to compile these again across all of our meetings. So we'll show the results in just a second. And we'll be doing this again for each of the goals. So if we think about that resource sharing goal, again, remembering input is about the investment that we make. So what we'd like to see, resources we'd like to see. If we are thinking an output measure, that's about counting, it's about really being able to have typically a quantitative response. If we're thinking about outcome, then we're really thinking about the change that we'd like to see as a result of Rails and their, their, their investment in resource sharing, what we hope to see happen. And then again, impact, that's long-term. We can see something farther out in the future. So I could see that we have some results coming in. So let's see how that looks again, as we add to what your colleagues contributed, contributed yesterday. So we have a lot of very evenly, almost very evenly spread. You know, where we're looking again for investments, we're looking to see if there are some numbers that we can count. But we mostly want to see a result. So because Rails really focuses on their resource sharing, we can see a change, a meaningful change happen. But we also like to see or, or understand that that could have a long-term effect. That we like to see Rails really invest for the future. Great. All right. So same thing, when you're thinking about the equity-related goal, you could again, answer three times. Are you wanting to see with Rails equity work? Are you really thinking you want to see an investment of resources? Are you wanting to see something tangible, something that can be counted? Are you wanting to see an outcome? So as a result of Rails really investing in this work, the people who are part of that work, really, you can see a change happen. Or are we really looking for a long-term impact? So we know, you know, farther out, again, harder to count, we've got to be patient and wait to see the results of our actions. So I can see we've got, keep adding or adding and adding. And then let's get a, look at what that looks like. So again, we're looking at this goal. It's tied really kind of between that investment and that individual change. But that what we're really looking for as Rails does this equity work is long-term impact. So we understand that as they start doing this work, it might be quite some time before we see the results of that work. This impact measures too, really feel like they fit in well. If we're thinking again about the broad member base that Rails is really looking at. Okay. And then here, let's look at the, the, the goal where we're really helping libraries be future-ready. So again, very similarly can answer three times. Can think about when we're really thinking about Rails helping libraries be ready for the future. Are we wanting to see investment? Are we wanting to see something tangible, something we can count, attendance, results? This notice it's, I can't fix this because I, we want to keep the first round in there, but I, it is my fault. We noticed this yesterday that I swapped impact and outcome. So impact is C instead of D and this choice and outcome is D instead of C. So that, my apologies for that. But again, if we're thinking about impact, it's choice C, that's long-term. What Rails does now to help libraries prepare for the future, we may not know for some time how successful we were for that. And then outcome could really be about the personal feelings, right? As people engage in like the professional development work, for example, that we highlighted. So again, we are pretty, a lot of even spread here, but we're really tied between that output and the impact. So really maybe being able to count, so that could be, you know, a percentage of programs that really have this focus or increase in the number of programs. But we're really looking for that long-term. So where we might be asking libraries, dial the road to really tell us the impact of the work that we've done. And then last but not least, we think about that organizational excellence goal. So it's really about strengthening the library community, you know, really about working side by side together. Do we want to see that? Really, it's about an investment of resource. Are we really wanting to see that as a, a number, things that we can count? Are we really wanting to see the change that we can make? So by Rails focusing in these areas, again, are we looking at a long-term impact? And so when we look at this, we're seeing again, that expectation that at the, the work that Rails does, that we may as individuals, whether that's individual library staff or individual member libraries, that we, we see a more immediate change as a result of Rails really focusing on, you know, strengthening the library community, but also that again, long-term impact. Great. Thank you so much. And so then just as always, when we have these small groups, I'm always curious to see if something really resonated in that group with you. So if there was anything that a member of your small group shared that you'd like everyone to hear, we'd love for you to share it here, just like the last time, you can type it as a statement or a sentence. So just that we could talk to other directors of Rails members, that if part of the conversation that came up was about maybe consultants reach type of library, a part of the conversation was really focusing on reducing underserved areas. I'll just give it another minute or so to see if we have anything else pop up. And then I want to make sure that we have a couple, at least a couple of minutes for any questions if people have them. That part of our conversation was around equities and per capita library funding, true as true in Illinois as I'm sure it is everywhere else. And that libraries need to be valued in the community. Okay. Thank you so much for that. So just to touch base on what's next, we were here today, as you can see, we had the two sessions today. So I just want to give a reminder that we'll have another session starting in an hour. So if you have a colleague that you really want to make sure could join, have them come back today in just an hour or so. And then just before we go, I just want to see if there are any questions that anybody has. And you can feel free to type them here. Again, you can use a sentence or you can just unmute yourself and share. And then while we wait for that, Monica, I didn't know if there's anything that you'd like to, to offer up before we head out.
Just wanted to sincerely thank all of you for your participation today and let you know that we really appreciate your comments. And I'm looking forward to reading all of them on the areas of focus documents.
All right. Well, I'll pause the end of recording. And if anybody has any questions, you can feel free to stay. And then otherwise have a great afternoon and stay healthy.